McKenna, please start the process of confirming YouTube Live.
Okay, Cameron, we're ready.
Very good. Thank you, President Lewis. We are ready when you are.
Thank you. Karen, would you please read the instructions for interpretation for our audience?
Interpretación en vivo. Usted puede escuchar la interpretación al español en vivo de las reuniones del Comité de Educación a través de conferencia telefónica. Llame al 303-867-0199. Cuando lo indique, ingrese el código 3, 6, 6, 5, 8, 9, seguido por la tecla numeral. Cuando lo indique, diga su nombre, seguido por la tecla numeral. Asegúrese de bajar el volumen en su computadora o dispositivo donde esté observando la reunión. Opciones de subtítulos: Closed Caption. YouTube ofrece subtítulos en una variedad de idiomas para videos cuando los vean posteriormente, no en vivo. Para ver un video en YouTube con subtítulos en su idioma de preferencia, haga clic en CC en la esquina inferior derecha de la pantalla de YouTube. Haga clic en ícono de configuraciones, Settings, en la parte inferior derecha de la pantalla de YouTube. Haga clic en Auto Translate o English y seleccione el idioma de su preferencia. Las agendas y minutas del comité se encuentran en la página web del Comité de Educación dentro de la página principal de Adams 14.
Thank you, Karen. I would like to welcome everybody to the joint meeting of Adams 14 and the City of Commerce City. Thank you for being here. I'd like to call this meeting to order and turn it over to Superintendent Mr. Don Rangel.
Thank you, President Lewis. First of all, I must say that I feel very fortunate to be able to work in a school district located in a city that takes the time to have city leadership and our school district leadership be able to get together periodically throughout the school year to share updates and ask questions of each other. I think it makes for a healthy partnership in particular because we really share a common interest in the children of our community. And so it is, it is nice to be here and be with our mayor and our city council. And I will say that I'm fortunate to work with a very engaged school board who is really paying attention to the work that is happening in our school system so that we can provide the kind of education that our, that our children deserve and, and that our town and our city deserve as well. I have a, a host of team members here tonight, Adam City Leadership Team members, that are going to give an overview of a variety of, of a variety of things, but in particular with a focus on the fact that on August 24th, based on the resolution by our school board, we started the school year with remote learning. And so I want to be able to give our team an opportunity to talk a little bit about how our school year got started, what our plans are for the future in regards to the Adams 14 online program. And I do want to give a sense of what's happening in the area of connectivity for our families with technology and also report out some information about our nutrition services program that is feeding our children daily. And one of the things that our school district leadership is reading is a book called The Speed of Trust. And in there, it defines trust as being synonymous with confidence. And I have a great deal of confidence in the team of folks that are going to be presenting to you tonight. And we're gonna, I'm gonna start by turning this program over to our Chief Academic Affairs Officer Sheila Burke to get us started.
Thank you Superintendent Rangel. Cameron, would you be able to put our presentation up for us tonight? Great, thank you, Cameron. So, good evening, President Lewis, Distinguished Board Members, Mayor Huesman, City Council Members, City Staff, Superintendent Rangel, and viewing audience. My name is Sheila Burke and I'm honored to serve as the Chief Academic Affairs Officer for Adams 14. On our opening slides, you're gonna see our board present, board members. Cameron, if you'll advance the slide, please. On our next slide down, you're going to see our team, including our superintendent and then my counterpart, Ms. Shay Martinez, who serves as our chief academic, Chief Business Affairs Officer. Followed by some of our executive directors that you're going to hear tonight. Cameron, will you advance the next slide? And then some of our additional colleagues, including some of our principals and directors that are out in the field. Our last folks that you'll hear from tonight will be our MGT team and some of those will be present with us as support, but may not necessarily have speaking roles. Cameron, next slide, please. I would like to begin by providing you with an overview of our school district and share areas of focus for 2020, 21 school year. Our district has 5,661 students enrolled as of August 28th in grades preschool through 12th grade. Our daily average attendance rate currently is 85% in remote learning. Our goal this year is for our district and schools to have 95% with our daily average attendance rate. We began our first two days of school last Monday and Tuesday at approximately 71%, so we are on our way to achieving this goal. A little over 86% of our student population is Hispanic. Approximately 9% is white and a little over 3% is identified as other. Currently, we have 13 different languages spoken in our district. A majority of our families in our district speak Spanish and/or English. Approximately 61% of our student population speaks a language other than English and approximately 82% of our student population qualify for free or reduced lunch. For the 2020, 21 school year, our areas of focus will be on two core content areas, math and English language arts. Our work will include deepening our knowledge and skill to provide best-first instruction to our students through professional development and implementing our math and English language arts resources, including our newly adopted materials, our curriculum maps, unit plans, and pacing guides. Through this work, we will see students engaged in classroom lessons, whether they're virtual or in person, as well as our students proficient in math and English language arts. Academic language is an important aspect of what we do in Adams 14. To support our many students who speak a language other than English, through our professional development, training, academic language will be embedded into our planning work. In addition, we will continue our work around our dual-language bilingual programming with our goal that students will be biliterate and earn the seal of biliteracy upon graduation. At this time, I'm going to turn our presentation over to Mr. Matt Schwartz, who will share about our preschool and elementary schools. Matt?
Good evening, everyone. Is everyone able to hear me? Thumbs up? Okay, thank you. So, my name is Matt Schwartz and I proudly serve in the role of Executive Director of Elementary Schools. And Cameron, can you forward this to the next slide, please? There we go. So, at the top, and I imagine many of you have seen the different logos of our schools, but so those, those are the logos of the, the elementary schools and our two preschools that I support. And, you know, I, I, like I stated upfront, proudly serve in this role and proud to say that we got off to a fantastic start this year with the support of all of our principals and the teachers and our, our classified staffs within all of our schools. So, off and running and they started their school year with about three weeks of professional development. So, we were able to properly prepare everybody for a remote type of setting for this year. We ultimately are, wanted to prepare in a manner that we could move from a remote setting to a hybrid model to even full-on traditional and have that agility. So, with that said, schools are up and running, very much parallel to a normal school day. They have all of their regular content courses and they, they are delivered through a synchronous and asynchronous learning environment, which means part of that is online, virtually with direct instruction, almost me to you right now. And asynchronous is a balance where you could have a student jump off and do some online still, but not necessarily in the, in the room with the teacher, in the virtual room. So, going on with that, some of our remaining work that we still have out there is, and you heard our acting superintendent touch on that, was some of the ongoing connectivity with our families. So, some of the work that we continue to do is engaging with our families and our support staff, as well as supporting them with a technological standpoint. So, still continuing to work with our families and provide them with modems and iPads. I know we're being prepped today to continue to support some of that learning. At this time, I want to take a moment and pass this over to my colleague, Dr. Jimenez, who oversees our secondary schools. Jeremy?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Adams 14 Board of Education Superintendent Rangel, City Council and Mayor Huesman. I am Dr. Jeremy Jimenez and I'm the Executive Director of Secondary Education for Adams 14. Mr. Schwartz did a great job and covered a good amount of information that also applies to secondary. Some aspects to the start of the year that are secondary focused include high school athletics, career and technical education, or CTE, and engagement programming. Right now, we have three sports seasons being played with boys golf, softball, and cross-country. Those are currently underway and going well in terms of being able to, to meet all the requirements of CHASA and Tri-County Health. Even in remote setting, we have been working to improve and increase our CTE programming through partnerships and trainings. Our CTE classes and elective classes are included in all three schedules for remote, hybrid, and full in-person. Students virtually attend these classes as they do their core classes. So, the schedule really is designed for every student to go to and interact with all of their teachers and their classes, whether it is in remote, hybrid, or traditional full in-person. And then finally, we've had a renewed focus on student engagement programming. Adding this year, we added Avid, Link Crew, and Inspire. Just kind of going off of what Mr. Schwartz had started is that our, the start of our year has, has gone really well. And this is a testament to our teachers, schools, students, parents, and communities willingness to work together. And based on this start, I'm excited to see what the upcoming weeks bring. But all in all, like Mr. Schwartz had said, is we're still making sure that our families are getting connected when they need to get connected. That's including whether it's a modem, Internet Essentials, that we have the paperwork to make sure our families can get internet if they need to, that's paid for through the district. And then also getting out more Chromebooks and iPads to students that need them currently. With that, I want to thank you for your time and the ability to come and share how our year opened up for secondary education. Thank you.
Cameron, can you forward to the next slide? I, I want to let everybody know Dr. Mindy Roden is not able to get in. Internet went down, so I know many of you have probably experienced some of that. So, I'm gonna step in, probably could never do it justice to the level that certainly Dr. Roden can, but I just want to walk you through some of the parts of her slide and I'll ask for Dr. Jimenez to fill in some of those blanks if I miss any, but so she serves in the role of Student Services, Dr. Roden does. And I'll, I'll kind of go back to what Dr. Jimenez and myself kind of refer to as we wanted to provide the most normal environment that we were able to in this setting. And with that said, our schedules parallel that along with some research and some of the things we learned this last spring. So, with that said, the same kind of went for some of our students with special needs. And we continue to do push-in virtually. We, we follow that same model that we did in a traditional environment with small group and specialized instruction and specialized services. So, all of these things are done through a synchronous type of learning environment where it's more direct, face-to-face, and a virtual type of setting.
Hey, Matt.
Yes.
I managed to, I'm back on.
Dr. Roden, I just spoke to the very first part of your slide, so I'm gonna step aside and I haven't really spoken to the mental health piece.
Okay, thank you so much. I, I apologize. My internet has been in and out. So, anyway, Matt did discuss about special education and one of the biggest questions that we have been getting are, are we still providing services? And we are doing our best to meet all the needs of our students through their IEP, including speech, OTPT, all that stuff. We're working very closely with our families to make sure they get what they need. In addition, in addition to special education, we have also a robust mental health program for our students in Adams 14. This year, we do have a district-wide articulated social-emotional learning program for the first time. And we have trained all our teachers and many of our support staff, including office staff and paraprofessionals, so that they can help have those same conversations with our families when parents call in with concerns. We know that there is increased risk of, of child abuse and some other things due to stressors in the home and the fact that we are not seeing our students. So, we have been providing training specifically on what some of the warning signs may look like in a remote environment. And so, we are working to address those issues, but also the isolation that some of our students and our families are feeling. So, how we can connect them to the community as a whole. We do employ 22 mental health professionals. And so that's, we have 10 school counselors and then 12 school psychologists and social workers. We also have a dedicated mental health coordinator. This is a new position for this year. She is a licensed counselor. And so she is leading the team, making sure they get the information they need so we can support our families. She's also a fluent Spanish speaker, so she can interact directly with our families when there is a mental health concern. In addition to that, we do work with Community Reach Centers to provide school-based therapists. This is the teletherapy model this year. But we do have that as well. We also are working diligently with engagement and transparency. We know that the best way to prevent school dropout is to make sure our kids engage in a thoughtful and deliberate manner. So, we are working with our school attendants and family liaisons to make sure that we don't develop patterns of absenteeism, which would be really easy to do in a remote environment. But that way, we are helping figure out what supports our families need, whether it's a new Chromebook, if the one they have isn't working, if they need access to internet. We can help them either apply through, to purchase it themselves, or work with them to get the modems. But that way, we support families in engaging early on and starting in elementary school, so that way, we don't set a pattern of absenteeism. And that way, kids are ready to go when we do eventually get back to either a hybrid or a traditional model. In addition to all these other supports, we also are still continuing to provide our English learners with EL services. So, we have both a dedicated and integrated blocks. And what that means is we have both basically pull-out where they get specific instruction and we have kind of an integrated model where they get that from their regular elementary school teachers. So, they get different types of services. We are still doing all sorts of placement screenings to make sure the kids who need services get services. In addition to that, we are working on our gifted and talented services. And kids are still able to participate in GT offerings. This year, we're working on connecting some of our students to a portfolio type of system, so that way, they can showcase their work in non-traditional manners. And it doesn't have to be just a test score, but it can be this full body of evidence that, that shows what a kid, who they are and what they can do, separate from a test score. So, we already started the training with our GT liaisons at the schools. And our specialty classes at the middle schools will be working on developing these portfolios. In addition to that, I know Matt has already addressed the fact that we do have electives in our schools. We are still providing art, music, and PE. And at the secondary level, we are also have that as well. And I'm a little off my game, so I'm not exactly sure who's following me right now.
Good evening.
There you go.
Can everyone hear me okay? All right, excellent. Good evening, Board President Lewis and the Adams City School Board members, as well as our City Council members and Mayor Huesman and Superintendent Rangel. My name is Todd Nguyen. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to speak on behalf of our Adams 14 online program. I am currently a elementary principal at Hanson Elementary with an additional task of being the Adams 14 online title to be determined. So, with that, at the very beginning of the year, we were challenged to have a conversation about what will learning look like for those who choose not to go back to in-person learning when that time comes. And so that started our plan about creating an online program. And so with that, we had 483 parents have requests for their children, grades kindergarten through 12th grade as of August 11th, 2020. We had some different options on how we were gonna develop this program, but we decided to grow our own program and have a homegrown program that aligns with what we're currently doing. So, a child who goes to online learning will use the same exact curriculum and we will also staff it with our staff members from Adams 14. For this year, we will have some members of our staff that will decide to, because of their own health concerns or whatever COVID brings to them, will need to stay home as well. And so for this, this current year, we'll be able to staff our online program with our current Adams 14 employees. That includes classified and certified. Beyond that, it may look a little bit different as we want to build this to last. But our online model will look exactly like it is right now. And we call that when a teacher's teaching live, a synchronous learning. So, synchronous learning means the teacher's teaching students live and asynchronous is when it's recorded or pre-recorded. So, we will have a continued synchronous learning model. And we are really, really excited about this opportunity. The 483 requests, it does move. That's a moving target. But as of the 11th, it was at that number. And that number could go higher or lower depending on families' comfort level sending their kids back to school. So, with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Technology, Mr. Brandon Steely.
Thanks, Todd. So, my name is Brandon Steely and I'm the Director of Technology for Adams 14. Traditionally, Adams 14 has operated in a cart model for our devices, meaning every classroom had access to either a cart of iPads or Chromebooks depending upon their grade level. We had not completed our build-out of a one-to-one device model for our grades. And prior to spring, we had a phrase, a phase plan for deployment that would span the next two years. Since the spring, Adams 14 staff have been available for 26 days at Adams City High School to deploy devices for our families. And we continue to deploy devices from our ESS Support Services Building, Monday through Friday. As of Friday last week, we have deployed over 5,200 Chromebooks. 4,900 of those Chromebooks remain in the hands of our students. And then this week, we're focused on preparing the 1,300 iPads that we've just received for our preschool and first-grade students. We anticipate starting deployment of those devices in the next few days. Additionally, we have 800 Chromebooks on order and that'll bring us to a one-to-one device-to-student ratio within the coming weeks. Internet accessibility, like for many districts, continues to be an area we're working hard on. And in the spring, we purchased Kajit modems with Verizon service. Then throughout the summer, we worked with Comcast to complete a contract for sponsored Internet Essential Service. And recently, we've been speaking with T-Mobile about their Project 10 Million. To date, we've provided internet access to nearly 250 students. And we recognize in our, in our work in this area as far from complete. And we look forward to really any opportunity we can work, we can use to pair with any other vendors or providers to help our students as we work to close that connectivity divide. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kasia Larson from our Nutrition Services team.
Evening, everyone. I wanted to share with you an overview to illustrate how Adams 14 Nutrition Services kept our kids fed in the community since the beginning of the pandemic and all the way through today. We began emergency feeding on March 17th for both of our middle school sites. We were able to utilize the Summer Food Service Program, which is an emergency program that allows us to feed when our schools are not in service. It also helps us ensure that our kids have food when they need it and ensure that our kids can continue learning as they are in a situation where they are not getting the, the normal services that they are used to getting. Emergency feeding went through the end of the school year, then the remainder of May through June and July, we operated a more traditional summer feeding program. However, this year, it was greatly expanded and we utilized a partnership with our Transportation Department at Adams 14 to include 11 distribution sites via bus stop and also one school walk-up-drive-up site. A program expansion made it possible to really reach a lot more of our community that was not able to get down to our original middle school locations. And we wanted to make sure that we were able to canvas as much of the area as possible. Next slide, please. So, as we begin this school year in remote learning, we wanted to take the efficiencies that we learn from emergency feeding and summer food service programs and apply it to feeding our students today. Our meal distribution will ensure the security, food security for Adams 14 students and allow them to focus on maximizing their learning potential. To accomplish this, we tripled our meal distribution sites, once again partnering with Transportation Department, as well as some paras and other staff. We serve breakfast-lunch combo packs daily across 12 bus routes, then include 32 bus stops and several school site locations. We do that in roughly about an hour window every day. Until today, we've been able to operate under the Summer Food Service Program, which is much more lenient. When we started the school year, USDA initially wanted us to run under the National School Lunch and School Breakfast Program. That means that we would only be able to feed students enrolled in Adams 14, whether from preschool all the way up to 12th grade. However, a new press release this morning from USDA will likely allow us to feed under the more inclusive summer feeding program for the next several months. It's not given for the entire school year, but they are trying to get that waiver extended through at least December. This again would allow us to feed all children under the age of 18, not just Adams 14 enrolled students. This is really great news, which allows us to better serve our families and and make sure that we're feeding not only our students, but the siblings of our students as well. We're looking forward to helping our students have a really successful school year. Thank you for that. And I would like to introduce our interim Director of Communications, Brianna Didle.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brianna Didle and I feel fortunate to be here, pinch hitting and offering some support to Adams 14 in a communications role. We've covered a lot of information and I think I'm the last slide, so I will be brief. We wanted to find ways to help support our families, our parents, our guardians and our students as we prepare for remote learning. You'll see the image in the middle of my screen right now is our fall restart plan. So that was a, a big document that we worked together as a team to introduce to our families. So they would better understand what remote learning would look like. The Communications Department then created a video, very high level, just kind of letting families know in a fun and exciting way what to expect with remote learning. Those were bilingual, of course, and we've had pretty, a pretty good success with views on that. We took it to a next step and created an FAQ page on our website. So that is really a centralized location that we're trying to keep all of the FAQs that we're getting from the community. So this page that's anchored on the district's homepage is really informed by hundreds of phone calls, emails, questions on the street, in the supermarket, wherever we're getting questions from parents and families. We're trying to then aggregate those on this page on our website to answer those questions. The next step we've taken is creating a live webinar. We did those before the first week of school where we kind of, the Communications Department, think of it as town hall-ish where we invited families and students. We even had some students on there, some little guys. It was great. And we just as a group walked through a technology resource document that is available to our families so that they can understand what resources the district is using and how to navigate those because these platforms are pretty new for all of us. So we found a way to engage with our families through these webinars. And then at the end of each webinar, we held a Q and A. And we use those Q and As and I didn't have all the answers. I was the first to admit they had a lot of good ones and some of the same questions I had as a parent for my kids in my district. But we worked really hard to find answers to those questions. And parents, guardians, grandparents either received a call, an email or a direct follow-up to make sure that we answered all their questions. And of course, those questions also get updated on our FAQ on the website so that we kind of keep the continuity going of an open line of communication for our families. We also helped support some of the technical backend stuff when our schools did live chats on the first day of school for the full day and on the second day of school for just the morning where parents could log in in real time, hop on a Google Meet and ask their questions about remote learning. I can't get into this classroom, but something's wrong with my Chromebook. So we had our school staff available to answer those questions. And so all the phone calls that we got that day, parents were really pleased that they had a live chat option to, to access information. So that's about all I have. I'm not quite sure who I'm turning it over to though.
Yeah, I'll take it from here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sheila.
Superintendent President Lewis, this concludes our presentation from our district here. So we'll turn it back over to you.
Superintendent Rangel, you're on mute.
That meant my lips were moving and nothing was coming out. So Mr. Mayor and our, our city council, if there are questions that you may have, our team is here to answer those for you. And we just wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot of what life looks like as we start in this non-traditional way to a school year to serve our kids. Safety and health will always come first. But we do hope that conditions allow us to move towards bringing our kids back into the schools as soon as it is, the risk is more, more minimal. And so what questions may you have for us if you have some?
Before I open it up for questions, just want to say thank you to everybody for the presentation. Phenomenal work that you all have put into getting the school year off the ground and keeping the students and their families afloat throughout the summer. I know everything changing and last minute updates for coming out of the state and coming out of the county made it really difficult for you guys to really plan. And I think that the amount of work that you have put into this as well as the, just the planning and the detail is phenomenal. So I want to say thank you for everything you're doing for the children of our community. With that being said, open it up. Are there any council members that have any questions for the staff of 14?
This is Cameron Wise in Communications and I see some digital hands raised. Would you like me to let you know who those are?
I can see him. Thank you. Councilman Guardiola.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, thank you, Adams 14, for a very good presentation and lots of good information. I do have a question for the food program that you guys are, you got the press release today. What's the budget on that? And say, or what's the total cost? Where's that money coming from? If it doesn't come out of the CARES Act, could Adams 14 still provide lunches and breakfasts for all kids under 18?
I'll have Kasia and or Shay answer that question.
I can answer a little bit then. I'll let you, all you kind of follow up the backside of that. But how we typically get reimbursement for our meals is we have to provide a certain meal that is laid out by the USDA. So it's something called a reimbursable meal. So long story short, under National School Lunch and National School Breakfast, we get reimbursement based on the student's eligibility, which is paid, reduced or free status. What the summer feeding program in this emergency situation allows us to do is maximize the reimbursement that we get back. So that's really, really great news for us right now. After that, with, we, Nutrition Services is a self-sustaining department and that's something I think a lot of people don't know is that we are run all by ourselves. So unless there's kind of a really crazy situation, we do not get money from the general fund. But right now we are still supporting all of our work, but I'm going to let Shay kind of follow up on anything. If we continue in this challenging time, that, that's something that may be a challenge for us.
Yes. Thank you, Kasia. And Mr. Guardiola, the reason this is such good news is because this does make sure that we're funded for these meals, at least through December. In the absence of this, of course, we would have still attempted and fed our community, but it would have left quite a large gap in, in that particular fund that we would have had to somehow backfill either with CARES money or with general fund money. So this is exceptional news for us. A lot of times we will get grantors that want to make sure that we feed our communities. So they will give us awards. $30,000 here, $50,000 here that do make an enormous amount of difference. But this in itself was a huge win for us. And, and I know Kesha and I this morning were like, oh yay. We, we were pretty excited that, that we were able to get these funds and continue the work that we are doing for our family.
Well, thank you. Also, is there still a food bank that you guys have? I know Lester Arnold and the Hope Center was before. Are they still operating within the district or do we send them to the regional one?
I can answer that Shay if you'd like.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Councilman Guardiola for the question. So we, the Hope Center is no longer in Adams 14. We do provide resources through our Title X Coordinator, which is Marianne Mosketa, to any of our families. So we do have resources, whether they're non-perishable foods, whether it's health items that they may need. And we also use our partnership with the food bank locally. So we use both.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for presenting tonight. I was just curious too. There was some funding that was given towards the updating of the gyms. I was just wondering how that's moving along. Has the gym remodeling and additions been started yet?
I do not believe that they have physically actually started yet. There, there's been some, some work that needed to be done first and, and some things that, that our operations department had that were a little more emergent at the time. I do know that we are recipients of that grant and I do know that we do have the match that we need for that grant. So we do know that the work will take place. We're just not sure exactly the timeframe as of yet.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Noble.
Thank you for the incredible job you've done. Really quite amazing. I'm curious about the connection shortfall. Are there any children or young people who are not able to learn remotely? And if so, what is the financial need there that would bring it up to 100%?
Um, Sheila, do you want to, as far as financially, if there are children that actually lack the abilities and the resources, then there would be, you know, we would certainly make sure that we, we put every resource we can into getting that child the education that they need. Somebody else may be able to answer the question as far as special ed funding or other kind of funding like that, that we would get if there were truly a learning deficit there as far as an online extraordinary deficit.
I think the question is really focused on the connectivity aspect of that. Yeah, that's all right. So Brandon or Sheila, would you like to answer that question?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in as best I can. And then Sheila, if you want to follow up. I think a lot of what we've run into is more around devices, availability of devices. And then the capacity of the networks within the Adams 14 boundaries. So without getting too deep into it, you know, broadband spectrum as far as wireless connectivity is very limited on the front range. And traditionally AT&amp;T and Verizon have been the strongest within our, within our service area. So we went with Verizon with the Kajit modems. And unfortunately, they're just not going to work everywhere. So we're working with T-Mobile to try and get those, get some of their devices. And again, we have Comcast to provide some of those services. But financially, I think we're doing everything we can. And some services just aren't going to be available to everybody within the community. So there are some areas where Comcast doesn't service. Verizon may not have the best connectivity. And, and again, we don't quite have the devices that we need from T-Mobile. So from a financial perspective, you know, Shay and her team have done a fantastic job of making sure we have every, every bit of funding that we can get. And we've gone with, basically, it doesn't matter what it costs at this point. We're doing what we can to get everybody that we can connected. And we'll try and sort that out later.
Thanks, Brandon. I'd like to add to Councilman Noble, thank you for the question. We have opened up our Adams 14 networks around our schools to be able to have families access those. We open them during the day so that we can reach a greater portion of our students. Right now we're using a ratio of a one to two device until the rest of our shipment comes in. And so far that's working well for us. It's not ideal. But we're making the best of the shortfall with our devices. We prepped several iPads today with a team of our colleagues to be able to hand those out with the goals that those will go out to the schools next week and grades preschool through first grade and have those be one-to-one. We did order 1,800 iPads to cover all of the individual needs. So every child has a device. And then those iPads, as children receive iPads in those grade levels, if they have a Chromebook, then we will reabsorb those into our system until our next shipment of Chromebooks come in. But our goal is to get them processed and out to our families as quickly as they can so that every child in our district has a device. So those are some of the pieces we're using to be able to work around the barriers that we're currently facing.
Thank you both. Thank you all.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for everything you guys are doing. Great presentations tonight. Just had one question. I saw a news piece last week on Denver schools having some issues with having someone in the home with younger students during the day to help with the, the remote learning. And I'm wondering if we're seeing any of those kinds of issues where maybe both parents are having to work during the day and, and if so, what sort of, what sort of processes are we putting in place to kind of help in those situations?
Thank you, Councilman Grimes. So we currently don't have a process set up yet. We have been looking at other districts such as Adams 12 as they've been running some of their childcare programs internally within their buildings. But currently we don't have a process set in place. As far as the calls are coming in, a lot of them are just requiring support with either getting logged in, technical issues that we're working through. And we have a helpline set up for that, both at the school level. And we're filtering calls at the district level and through our communication inbox. We're still working on supports for that, but currently we don't have a plan set up for students that may be experiencing or needing support when there's no adult at home because they're currently both working.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Well, thank you again. Like I said, all the work that you, as an organization have put together, it shows in the efforts and the preparations you've done. Truly impressive in the times that we're dealing with and you guys are navigating it just beautifully. So thank you for everything you're doing. With that, I have nothing else to add and we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you again for the opportunity to present and you are right where there are some things that we need to continue to work through. And so we appreciate the questions. But one of the things I am confident about is that our staff is working to communicate with each of our families when communication is necessary and figuring out what it is that that particular family needs in the way of support. So we can work on that. And so Mayor, I turn it over to you and your team for your portion of this meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Tinklinburg, do you have anything you want to present?
Yes, sir. We have a presentation that's been shared. Very good. Next slide, please. So I'll cover four items, basically development activity, community survey, redevelopment on the Greyhound Park and recruitment of new city manager. Next slide. So development activity did not slow down during the COVID-19 pandemic, which is still ongoing, as you well know. We've seen actual increase in the number of residential lots, primarily in the northern part of the city, as well as an increase in the number of planning cases. So as you can see, the statistics down below shows a 28% increase. Next slide. So moving on to the results of the community survey. That was done by Polco and NRC in collaboration with the International City County Managers Association. It's designed to assess community livability and primarily looking at community characteristics, governance and participation. Next slide. So you can see, these are the focus areas. And the three that showed up as the most important were safety, natural environment and economy. You can see the other items as well that show up in, in the survey. Next slide, please. So some of the key findings were that safety contributes to the quality of life and merits continued focus. Getting around town is getting easier, which is good news. Small gains seen in the economy, but still opportunities for improvement. Now, of course, this survey was taken back in 2019, so pre-COVID and pre the current recession. Residents try to stay healthy, but more, but would like more recreation and wellness opportunities. And during this pandemic, we all would. Next slide. So the findings, there was an increase in the number who feels safe in their neighborhood. It was up from 2018 at 89%. It was up from 2018 at 89%. 64% feel safe in the commercial area. 54% overall feeling of safety. And 65% rate the police as excellent or good. And 55% rate emergency preparedness as excellent or good, which again is an increase from 2018. Next slide. Here you can see the increases that occurred in street repair, in transit service, ease of walking, traffic signal timing, as well as paths and walking trails. All five of those increased by a significant amount. Next slide. 80% of the residents think economic health is important for the city in the next two years. 30% of residents positively rated overall economic health, place to work, and economic development. 20% of residents positively rated vibrant downtown, commercial area, business and service establishments, shopping opportunities, employment opportunities, place to visit, and cost of living. Next slide. Again, these are some of the key factors for recreation and wellness. You can see that, again, significant increases in healthcare, health services, recreation programs, the recreation centers, and city parks. Next slide. Moving on to the Mile High Greyhound Park, closing date is tomorrow, September 1st. The mayor and I signed documents today, and at some point, there'll be a media event around groundbreaking. Construction will start quickly once the sale is complete. The public improvement agreement and the plat are recorded, and there's no definite plans yet for the education parcel. Next slide. Then, turning to city manager recruitment, city council selected Affion Public. They will, they were selected back on the 17th of this month, and currently, Affion is meeting with city council members as well as additional stakeholders to put together the position and candidate profile that will go out. The additional meetings with additional stakeholders is set for this first week of September. Then Affion will deliver that to city council for approval, and then they plan to have candidates 75 days after the profile is complete. So overall, you know, by the time there are interviews and background checks, and an individual gives notice in her or his current position, and then moves here, we're probably looking at a six to eight-month period, starting from back in July. So next slide, please. And that is the end of my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that come up.
Thank you so much for that information. I know the community survey information is very helpful, and is that available somewhere for everyone to see?
I believe we will have it posted on the internet. If not, I will make sure we do.
Okay, thank you. Fellow board members, you have questions for city staff?
Hi, everyone. I just have a couple of quick comments, no questions. Just wanted to send a tremendous thank you for including us and inviting our students to name the new park, Eagle Nest. It was an amazing, amazing, sorry, I can't speak, reopening. And just to see the amazing way that you recognized our students by giving them the backpacks, and it was just wonderful to see. So thank you all for including us in that. Also, I saw the Commerce City Connect newsletter, and shout out to including our superintendent in the council corner. I just, I'm just really happy to see us working together and collaborating, so just wanted to say thank you really quickly.
Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Lovato. Ms. Zubio, do you have anything this evening?
Hello? Okay, I was going to say, Ron had his hand up first. Is it okay if he goes, and then I can answer after he does?
Thank you, Ms. Zubio, and thank you, Ramona. Really, I was just going to comment on the very thing that Ms. Lovato was going to say. We were so impressed with the new park, the Eagles Nest, that was there at the grand opening with several of the district administrators, and just thought, you know, what an opportunity, what a resource for our kids, for our community. So I'm glad we have a chance to share in it. So kudos to the city.
Thank you. So I too, thank you. I was there, and it was beautiful, and it still is. And like I said, I appreciate everything that everybody did to make that happen, because for the longest time, that's been one of my soapboxes, our passion has been really making sure that our special needs children are included and that things are more inclusive for them, you know, not just at the schools, but the city level. So thank you all for that. I do, however, have one question with all the different projects here. I know that you tend to put out, I don't know, information for citizen comment on a lot of these, or, you know, I guess I just want to know how or what the city is doing to really help include the large percentage of Hispanic families that we have in the city? Because the folks that I talk to aren't really familiar with a lot of these things from, you know, the Mile High, the Greyhound work, even the survey. I'm just curious to see, you know, what, is there a plan in place to involve more of that, the voice of that community? And considering that, you know, we just shared as a district that we have like our highest percentage of Hispanic, you know, families, and, I mean, that's a huge percentage that's not being represented, or their voice being represented at a larger scale. So I just, I guess I would like to know if there's some type of plan in place to help promote and help get more of those voices to the table, just because you guys are doing some wonderful things, and I just want to make sure people are aware of it. Thank you.
Mayor, I can take a shot at that if you want me to.
You know, how about stay tuned for the city council meeting that's about to happen?
So one of the things I would say is, I had the opportunity to meet with Cultivando last, let's say, two weeks ago, and then Ministry of Social Justice at Our Lady Mother of the Church last week. And that was one of the topics that we discussed is, you know, what we can do to increase the outreach to the Spanish-speaking part of the population. And so one of the things that is coming up is we will be updating a comprehensive plan for the city, which guides the long-range planning by city council and efforts by city staff. And one of the components of that is Spanish outreach, so that we make sure to include people that are not primary English-speaking families, again, to make sure that we have that input into that process. So, you know, we've been attempting to publish our materials in Spanish, but I know that we certainly can do better, and we're going to continue to increase the effort in that area.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
If there are no other questions from board members or staff, seeing none, we will close our meeting. We appreciate the time that you spent with us this evening, and we look forward to continuing to work with our city. And just very appreciative of the collegiality that we have with you. So I know you have another meeting to get to, so we will go ahead and close this meeting, and thank you again.
Thank you. Have a good meeting.
Thanks, everyone.